City Commission, if you'd join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This evening, we have just one item on the agenda, and it's a big one. It is to consider the 2019 city budget and the 2019 to 2023 capital improvements program budget also. And this is like the second city budget work session we've had. So, who's Hillary Badger, Assistant Director of Finance? Yeah, great.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Hillary Badger, Assistant Director of Finance, our second time being in front of you. Thursday, you all should have received a draft of the 2019 budget and capital improvement program. There's a lot of details in that book. Hopefully, you've had a little bit of time to digest some of it. Mostly, what I'm going to be talking about this evening is where the budget currently stands, but how we got there. Some historical numbers and figures throughout the last five years of the general fund and our major revenue sources, as well as what makes up the expenditures of the general fund. For the 2019 budget, we're looking at a total city budget of $155 million, which is a $6.7 million increase. $4.75 million of that is from the new Trails and Recreation Fund, which is from the renewed quality-of-life sales tax that the voters approved last November. And that all is within the special revenue funds category there. What I'm going to be focusing on for the next few slides is really the general fund and what we're seeing in 2019 and what is it before you in that budget book. So, in 2019, we're proposing a $1.3 million increase in the general fund. For property taxes in 2019, currently, there's a request for $29 million in property taxes. And again, I'm going to focus on the increase between this year and next year that we're proposing is $2.2 million. 1.1 of that, half of that, is within the general fund. And 1.1 million of the 1.3 increase in the general fund is really a telling story in and of itself. It shows that there's not really any other source revenue-wise to back up the increase that is proposed within the general fund of 1.3 million. Really quickly, we like to review some of this with citizens that come in to visit us, as well as on our website. But just as a reminder, your distribution of property taxes for every dollar, the, within the proposed budget, 11 cents is what is currently what we ask you to discuss at these work sessions and consider within the proposed budget and then adopt in the budget in August. So, for all city services, under the authority of the city manager, 11 cents on the dollar is what really is the full bound of that policy document for the budget. Historically, for our property taxes, as you can see, the Riley County Police Department and the library, as well as the inside city services, so this includes general fund, bond and interest, the employee benefit fund, KPNF. You can kind of see here that that valuation growth line, it's not growing exponentially. And typically, when we do have a growth in valuation, most of that tends to be distributed to the Riley County Police Department per the size of what it is of our levy. So, it's about 60% of our total property taxes that we levy. So, that distribution of valuation growth goes to most of it per how you have to distribute property taxes. For sales tax dollars, we're at the same figure. For the city of Manhattan, for every dollar that someone spends, 11 cents comes back to the city to support operations. Mainly, those 11 cents are going to the general fund and helping support those operations, which is why the slides that I'm about to present are very important, because it's such a big source of funding for the general fund that when anything tends to happen with another source, we fill it in a lot of different ways. So, in the past two years and currently this year, we've really been seeing a decline in, not a sharp decline in sales tax, but really a stabilization. We're not growing exponentially, it's not decreasing that much, but we're not seeing the growth that we have seen in what Bernie always refers to as our Camelot periods. Prior to when I was here, but I know several staffers can remember, we used to grow very, very exponentially every year, year over year, in sales tax growth. We're just not experiencing that right now, and we don't intend to in 2019. Five months into the year, we haven't seen anything to indicate otherwise that shows us what 2017 did as well. So, 2017, we just had over almost $11 billion in sales tax, but that was down from 2016. Municipal court fines is also a major revenue source within the general fund that we've seen in the last few years have a decline. So, we've adjusted the 2019 budget to reflect that. We do not think that we can support an increased revenue and that's, we don't have the data to prove that that would come in at the rate that we once saw in 2015. This doesn't mean to say that, you know, any other way or what's going on with it. These are just things that we look at while we're building a budget. So, if you go back through the last five years, you can see we're a little bit lower than what we were in 2013 and even 2014. So, when we're building a budget, that's a major thing that we're looking at, our historical figures and just what's happened in these last 12 to 18 months, because we're trying to project out 18 months when we're building this budget. The next couple of slides, I want to talk about building permits and what we're seeing with some of that. And if you have further questions, I know our fire chief would be happy to help me answer some of them. But what we're seeing with building permits is yet again, kind of a stabilization. There's not, we're not seeing a rapid growth in permits. And when we look budget to actual, we're seeing that we need to adjust for some of that. And that's a really hard figure to come about, you don't really know. Sometimes, in the past, we've been able to say, we know subdivisions or this and that that are going to be built, but we don't have anything that big on the horizon that we know about residential-wise or even commercial-wise that could lead us to think that the number of permits issued in 2019 would be exponentially more than this year.
Hillary, before you move on from that page, from that slide, do you think that might be due to the lull in development at K-State? They had a lot of structures going up all at once, and then there hasn't been that much?
No, these reflect building permits that are purchased for dwelling units or residential or commercial. So, K-State's permits, Scott, you could correct me, but...
We don't issue them?
They're not issued.
The next slide is probably more eye-opening as to what's going on.
So, as you can see in this five-year comparison of building permits, the total permits are anything that you would have to get for a renovation or, you know, addition to your home, anything like that. And the new residential is a per-unit basis. As you can see, the valuation within these building permits has really fluctuated. And in 2017 was much lower than 2016 and kind of backed down again to comparable of the 2014's number. Total fees to date through May is $180,000. We are comparable to years before, but there's not anything there to indicate a large increase that we could potentially count on in 2019. So, as you can see, we really start to see a decline here in total permits, as well as, this is an anomaly due to the links. This is, that's the per-dwelling. So, when we see here in 2017 that there was 144, we're not that bad year-to-date, but there's nothing to say that's really going to increase and we're going to see a large growth in this revenue source.
So, is that the assessment that the building of the links has somewhat dampened other construction of a similar type?
No, it's just a per-year comparison. It kind of makes everything else, when you start to compare the new residentials, we'd really need to maybe back that out of there to see the other standard growth that occurs. So, that 785 is just, tends to be an anomaly because it's per the dwelling, or per the unit.
Anecdotally, anecdotally, the answer is yes. We're hearing it from the community.
That's my assessment, that sometimes you get overbuilt for a period of time. That 700 was huge, even by Manhattan standards. The, what is the year-to-date cutoff? Is that the end of July or...?
End of May. Those are what we have...
When does our counting year end?
December. We're a January to December fiscal year.
So, this is fiscal year, not our budget year?
Correct. Both are the same.
Even though we set them in August, our budgets start in January.
Okay, so if it's, if this is May, we still have seven months. So, one can argue that we might be at 300 units.
Yeah, in fact, Brad showed us year-to-date in 17, and we're ahead of 17. So, we could possibly generate more fees than the 382. I think when you look back to 15 and 14, those are probably more of your target years in terms of fees being generated. Whether or not we'll reach back up to $400,000 in total fees, I think on, on what we saw from Brad, we could be close to that number.
Total per-fees, Bernie and I looked at this earlier. And last year through the month of May, fee-wise, we were at $155,000, $155,000. So, we're a little bit ahead of last year for the first five months of the year.
Well, if you remember last time, I was trying to get a handle on kind of what our assessment is at the end of 2018, so that, you know, we have some idea between the revenue that we expect and the expenses that we have already written down.
And we're going to go through that this evening. I'm trying to take you just through a historical view. Bernie's going to get into some of our projections and how we do arrive back at that 2019 proposed budget. This is some of the data, though, that we use when we're calculating all of these revenue streams and looking at them in depth, not just to...
There's a couple of notes in the red book here that indicate we are above last year or this year, but we're maybe slightly below the previous year, so we've had a dip in there.
We're not budgeting, that's correct. We're not, in 2019, we're not budgeting building permit fees as high as we budgeted them in 2018, because we didn't, we don't have the data to support it right now.
Well, budgeting aside, you know, the trend to me, and your notes indicate on taxes and things like that, the taxes are above what we had last year, but less than the previous year perhaps. Maybe just on par. So, that just means we've had a dip and maybe even come back a little bit compared to two years ago. So, that, that's kind of what I'm trying to think through when we get to 2019 to see how much revenue we might have as a forecast.
Yes, and that's everything that we try to put together when we look at these budgets or projections, how we're going to end this year, expenditure-wise, revenue-wise. And you're correct, Commissioner, that sales tax number of 10.9 million. You can see here that this is not, it's not grown exponentially, but per-budget. We have to always compare if we're comparing actual to actual every year or budget to actual. And what we need to do is make sure that our budget is aligned with what we really think is going to happen, because when we, if we were to, I mean, you can budget as much as you want in a sales tax number, so you could just say 20 million, but if it's not going to come in, you're going to build a budget that's unreliable. So, we try to make sure those figures are within each other, so that they're reliable. And that way, when we're going through sales tax month to month, you all get those updates that were aligned with budget and not seeing a decline compared to budget or actual.
Well, I guess my confusion is, you know, we're in the May of 2018. And so, what I'm trying to do is make a projection for 2018 that's realistic based upon what we see now. And that's why these notes in here, I think, indicate to me that we're probably as good as we were in 16.
That's correct.
So, that's kind of my baseline thinking going into 19.
We've really taken those two years and said, this is, this is what's happening. It's not declining rapidly, it's not growing rapidly, but it's leveling off.
But you can't see that with just 17 data. All these charts have a 17 data with no projection for 18 data. So, you know, we're a year behind.
Later in the presentation, we'll get there. What we were trying to do here is just to show a five-year snapshot up until this year. There's a trend there. 18 is not being too kind to us based on where we were in 16 and 17. We're, we're hitting a little bit of a trough, and we're adjusting to that internally. It's hard to adjust to that and also say, we're going to be back up in 19. We only have five months of data. Bernie's presentation will get here, and we'll get to some of those projections that you're talking about. But it's hard to talk about 19 without realizing where we're at in 18. So, we wanted to just provide a five-year snap of the data we had, not necessarily the year-to-date, but where we've been in the last five. And there's a lot of correlation to our revenues and how our budgets have been balanced in the last five years. You can see those trend lines going up in a lot of, in a lot of circumstances, and that's offered the flexibility to do some of the things we've done in the past by way of reducing mill levies. As we move into 19, that's going to be tighter, it's going to be harder to do. And that's essentially why we have these slides here for you, just to remind you.
Okay, all right, thanks.
So, really, we're back to this 6.8 million in what you all consider within the authority and execution of the city manager each year. That's what we continue to have work sessions on in prior years and what we tend to focus on. For the general fund, there's two ways that we tend to break this down. In our budget book that's published, we break it down per category and by department. So, first, I really wanted to show you all, the 67% of our current budget is made up of people in the general fund, which is our main operating fund. That's not uncommon from other cities, but that's a large portion. And when we tend to have these stagnant periods of revenue and not seeing growth, this tends to be an area that we look at. We look at those contractual services, those commodities. Our capital improvement program also becomes a big discussion within this. But that 67% is really where we come back to in terms of almost $30 million budget. 20 million of it is people. By department is our second way of looking at the general fund. So, each year, you can see here that no department grows that much in terms of their total budget. And the big difference between 2016 and 2017 in that general government line item was the change that we did with healthcare services and moving it to employee benefit fund. That's why that percentage dropped to 32%. When we look at how much property taxes are within the general fund, at about $3.2 million in 2018 and just under 3 in 2017, you begin to see what it breaks down to in terms of department and what it supports. We can also see that historically, what it supported in last year, out of that two, almost $3 million, 1.9 million of it supported people within the general fund. So, of almost $20 million, 1.9 of it comes from property taxes. The rest of it comes from our other revenue sources within the general fund, and that's why they are so important when we're looking historically at these figures and planning out a budget for the next year. Our revenue sources in the general fund, we are very, very reliant on sales tax. We always have been, that probably will not be a change. At 43% of the revenue within the fund being from that state and local tax. So, that comes from our 1% and then use tax, with the next source, two sources being user fees and licenses and transfers. So, those are huge sources to us, but not as big as sales tax. That's why we look at them and we look, we always go through so much data every month about sales tax, because that is what our general operating fund is relying on every month. To give you an idea, for every dollar again, in the general fund, now, we're just speaking, 43 cents of that is from sales tax, 11 cents of that is property tax, 17 from transfers, 17 from user fees and licenses, and 12 cents from other. If you're a residential homeowner in the city of Manhattan, from your current year to what we're proposing in 2019, and your house currently is worth $200,000, and we're going to estimate, estimate in the scenario that your house is increasing by 3% in valuation, you're going to have a total property tax bill increase for city services of $91 from 2018 to 2019, or a monthly increase of $7.58. And once again, you can see where the majority of that is being pulled within the city's general fund and within the, within the Riley County Police Department tax, the portion of the tax bill. If you're a commercial owner and you have a business worth $2 million, and in 2019, it's going to increase again as a 3% valuation, you're going to have a $1,976 increase in property taxes for the city services that you pay for, or $165 a month. So, these are scenarios that we like to give the public and other people. We have calculators on our website, so you can go in and enter your own home data and see what you may be, be looking at. This is something that we all try to look at when we're talking about mill levies, we're talking about property taxes, and we're talking about where that property tax dollar goes to.
And Hillary, this is just for the increase in valuation?
Yes.
Is this with a flat mill levy, or is it with our two and a half million?
This is with the proposed mill levy increase of 2.4.
Does that link to the county and USD, or do they, do they have similar things for them?
We have them on our website, if you want to go look. I don't think the county or the school district put up a property tax calculator that I'm aware of on their websites. On ours, you can look at all breakdowns of city, USD 383, Riley County, and the state of Kansas.
So, if Riley has, for example, whatever it is, 2.24, I've forgotten, and then USD has as much as 7.3, does, does our calculator allow them to put those numbers in or just calculate our 2.1?
Once they're finalized and we know what their mill levy adoption is, yes, we make all of that available online to the user. So, right now, if you wanted to go and do your 2018 property tax statement, you would have the USD, Riley County. For 2019, you wouldn't, because we don't know what they're going to adopt yet.
Yeah, I looked at it today, it's got last year's numbers, and you can't change the mill levy. You can only put in your own number. So, I calculated myself, but if you add everything that Commissioner Dotson just said, and you have a $200,000 house, which is right about the average, you're going to, you're looking at $300, you know, increase, not 91 when you add all that. So, it's pretty whopping, because it's about 12 mills when you add up what everybody's talking about right now. And that, that's scary.
Hillary, on the commercial, is, I know the average for the house might be around 2,000. Is it about 2 million average for commercial?
That's a whole number that we took. I don't know that that's an average per se.
I'm thinking it might be higher.
That's just what we took. If your business is worth, and the property is worth 2 million, we've done other figures in the past. Again, you can plug in any type of value.
Just so that, as we talk about it in a, all the entities combined as the discussion is going, if everybody's basing it on 2 mil, 2 million for commercial property, we might actually be underestimating for some of the properties that are, I don't know if that's the average. I would like to know what the actual average might be, or the median or something.
Commercial's a little bit more difficult. We have some huge outliers, you know, like the Hilton, some of the hotels are...
Pacific Plus and all of those would be outlined.
Yeah, they're in excess. I mean, Civics Plus is probably 7 million. Some of the hotels are, you know, 12, 13 million. Some of our smaller hotels are 5 or 6 million. You have a lot of properties in Aggieville downtown that are in that half-million to a million-dollar range. So, we can come up with an average. It's pretty easy to, for us to look at our evaluation.
I would like more of an, I'm thinking about 4 or 5 million seems more accurate to me, but I'm not sure.
I don't think it's that high.
You don't think the average is...
No, I think the majority of our properties are under a million dollars. You have some outliers that everybody likes to focus on, but we'll get you the number.
See, what's more interesting, I guess, you know, we normally say that, you know, if you have $100,000 worth of property, you know, a mill increase will cost you about $11.50 to $12. And then if you do the same thing for commercial, you're going to add another 50% on there, so about 18. And that gives people a pretty good idea, like, you know, if my, if my business is worth 2 million, then I can figure it out from there. And that's really probably a better way of looking at it than trying to get an average, because it's too wide a thing. For, for the, for the houses, now, I was just looking at the real estate side. I think it said 227,000 was the, was the average. But that again, you know, that's quite a, quite a big distance. So, I like the idea of just knowing for every $100,000 evaluation, what does that mean, you know, per mill? I think it's around 12 bucks.
And back to the general fund and what we consider an expenditure. So, every year, the capital improvement, the capital improvement program is presented to you and in the book of all the projects. And 2019 is currently proposed at $375,000. In 2018, it's $344,000. Highest year we've been is 2016, which is just over $700,000 in a capital improvement program just for the general fund. When we talk about budgets and other things, we like to revisit things that we have heard or do know from our 2017 community survey. Here are the top 10 things that people said that they were, had the highest satisfaction of in the city, with the number one being quality of life. So, when we look at the general fund, really looking at that park and recreation side of what is in the general fund, which is a large portion of it, but also safety, so we think about fire, police, other things. Cleanliness of streets and public areas, that was a number four thing. So, these are things that we like to go back to and look at when we're building a budget and also say, you know, what are the goals within this document? What are we spending things on? And what have our citizens told us that they like about our community? Of course, in doing that, you also have to look at what they don't like. So, these are the top 10 things that people said they're highly dissatisfied within the 2017 community survey, with the number one being availability of affordable housing. So, those are all things to consider when we're going in and trying to propose and adopt another budget year, as well as being seven months out from when that year actually takes place.
Hillary, I think it's important that the number two item that the citizens are most dissatisfied with is condition of rental housing. And that needs to be something we reference periodically here, too. But thank you, I just did it.
So, for the bond and interest fund, I just want to touch on it really quickly. For what we've seen historically and what you're presenting within the 2019 budget, over the last 10 years, the payments have steadily increased. However, in 2017, 2018, 2019, they're kind of leveling off, but that property tax impact is happening due to the cash balance. but that property tax impact is happening due to the cash balance that is in the bond and interest fund. So in 2019, when you look at that fund, you'll see that the cash balance, beginning cash balance is declining. We have a floor for that fund as well, but we're nearing that floor. In 2019, I believe we're budgeting about a $1.3 million cash balance in the unrestricted that isn't for the debt to pay the old quality of life bonds. And our floor is 1 million. So we're nearing that and each year we have kind of taken some of that cash to make sure that the mill levy has not done drastic things. But we're obviously going to experience in 2019 an increase needed to support the principal payments within the bond and interest fund. Economic development, at the last work session, we heard from commissioners about wanting to know the updated balances and other things of the economic development fund. This is just the renewed 2012 to 2022. So Commissioner Dodson, the information you looked at, that 6,600, this is what we're looking at. And infrastructure committed, there's a $6.8 million commitment already made with only 1.1 million. If we divide that 65%, that's staying in economic development, there's only 1.1 million left for infrastructure. But it's reversed when you talk about jobs. So there's 1.2 in committed and 6.8 in available balance. And the rest of the 35% goes to the debt service to help pay for those bond and interest payments I just talked about.
Real quick, Hillary, on the bond and interest payments and on the previous slide too, I know a few work sessions back, we talked about how we're retiring debt over the next few years. So does most of that debt we're retiring have special revenue? Or will it impact the payment amounts we're making here? Like, are we going to see those payment amounts drop with that debt dropping? Or is all of that debt like specials that have special revenue tied to them already?
That's, so when you look at bond and interest in the future, it's really, the retirement really counts on currently what you issued. So in May, when we issued 23 million dollars, what we're looking at in 2019 are those bond and interest principal payments. So in 2019, I believe our total bond principal goes to 12 million. So we're really looking at how that breaks down every year, but that also takes into account then, you know, the prior years and what we have retired. So it's a little bit different.
Your bond and interest has all payments. So all revenue sources come in there. It's not separate.
Got it, okay.
So the 12, you know, we're nearing 12 million. Revenue sources include special assessments.
Got it, okay. Okay, thank you.
So of that 12 million, just to give you a rough estimate, I think 6.5 of it is from special assessments. So we always break it down per what the bond payment is for.
Hillary, back to the economic development pie chart. I'm looking, I'm trying to find 30 million. We had our sales tax and we were going to divide it into thirds. And so I see a third in debt service. I see a third roughly in, maybe not, maybe I miscalculated. But I'm just trying to do the division and see where the money has, if, how the money has gone into those three plots.
This represents the 30 million. The only things that I don't have highlighted here are the program administration things that we've paid certain years. We have paid for outside agencies from this fund. That also includes things such as the chambers contract, as well as administrative fees that we charge back for city staff's work within the fund and efforts to recruit. So this does represent the total $30 million over that course of the 10-year special sales tax period.
Thank you.
And to break that chart down into a bar chart, you'll see here that to date, we have just about 4.7 million collected for debt service total through the life of the special sales tax. And as you can see here again, those balance amounts and where we are revenue collected, you can see on this jobs bar that per our collection, we're a little bit into that balance of where we've committed. This was something that we developed years ago when we decided to, the commission decided to have the fund split in those three different areas. And we continue to monitor of revenue collection and what's been committed and the balance of each of these categories. We also heard a request.
Can I just add one thing? I always mention this. I mean, while we split them in those three, the debt one's set. The other two are not, so it's movable. If it becomes necessary to do so, and I just don't want people to lose sight of that.
That's correct.
You can bear on that slide, the red boxes are really that program administration that probably weren't showing up in the totals on the pie chart.
Okay.
So to get to your full 100%, those are the two areas.
I was trying to approximate a 30 million. Okay, thank you.
We also heard last work session for information about transient guest tax and where those monies have been historically and where we have them projected. So for 2019 budget, there's a few things that have changed. As you can see here, the total transfer to debt service has increased and there's no longer a transfer to the general fund. That's because there was a request to help fund the debt for the Annenberg sports park improvements and that debt service that's coming on. And it equates to almost the same exact money that was being transferred to the general fund for the Flint Hills Discovery Center. Other than that, we have pretty good indications so far through this year that our revenues will increase. We've increased more than just the 1% increase in rate that we accounted for. So we're really looking at being a little bit ahead in total of our transit guest tax of about $20,000. But yet again, not a substantial growth within that revenue source. And if you all have any questions about this forecast, I'd be happy to answer them. This is a preview for the third work session, which will be June 26. This is historically the work session where all of the outside agencies present their allocation requests to you and they've been presented in the budget document that you have. So we all hear from the several advisory boards, as well as the outside agencies that are funded from Tourism and Convention Promotion Fund, as well as the Economic Development Fund.
Where does the, where does the MPO fit into this?
The MPO, because it's a, I mean, the MPO fits within the general fund, if that's what you're asking, if where it's paid from.
Yeah, I just didn't see like a line item for it anywhere. So I was just wondering where it comes out of.
It's within page.
Because that payment to them was going up pretty substantially for 2019. So I was just curious where that was making an impact.
I guess I assumed it was in Flint Hills transportation, but it's not.
It's on page 159 of the budget document, of the printed document. And the total requested 2019 budget is $69,475.
Got it, okay, thank you.
And at that time, I'll stand for questions that you may have.
Just the slide with outside agencies, you included the library. And I sort of don't think it really fits there.
It's just a review of who comes the 26th and talks to you all.
When we're saying, you know, operational definitions, like these outside agencies are things we don't control in the library that's set by charter ordinance. And it's six mills and it's like RCPD, it'd be like calling them an outside agency. I mean, they're there. And so I just want to clarify that because we were talking outside agencies a couple of meetings ago. And of course, that one wasn't on the list because the library, what it is, what it is. It's the charter ordinance and they can spend up to six mills. And I think this year, they're under that even if you add what they're planning on spending for operation and their employee fund. So I don't have a problem with that one.
Yes, it's just, this is just a snapshot of who comes before you on the 26th to present their requests.
Is this for questions for the?
Just for my portion of the presentation.
Okay, I have questions for Bernie then.
Okay.
Thank you.
I wanted to ask, you know, two other things. And this transit guest tax forecasting, you put all those outside agencies in there like they were last year? And that's what this is based on?
Yes.
So if we were to do that, then it looks like the impact here is maybe just $5,000 less than the year before?
Yes.
Which is better than I envisioned if we put all those there. So that's not, that's not too bad. Then the other question is on the bond and interest fund, are you computing the conference center as being paid for out of the general fund or out of economic development?
No, it's still split the, in what we have it in the current year, which is a third from transient guest tax. And then two thirds, or the 240,000.
A third, a third, a third. And of course, I'm advocating. I'm advocating we don't do that. That would actually put more in the transient guest tax and take it all out of economic development because there's plenty of money in there.
Okay.
And then not affect the general fund. And then that helps everything a great deal. So I wanted to, I wanted to mention that because I talked about that last week also.
The only caution with moving that out of, we have some in bond and interest, do we not? So we have, our total conference center payments, 600 to 700,000 dollars a year. And last year, we really just debated 500 of it because that's what rolled out of EcoDevo and left us with the balance. So I think we split that 500 between TGT, EcoDevo, and bond and interest. And I'm not sure, there's repercussions for taking it out of bond and interest, which Bernie can talk to you about, but I just wanted to remind you that there's.
But we've got over seven, almost eight million dollars of uncommitted funds in economic development.
And I'm not talking economic development repercussions. I'm talking tax-led repercussions on the bond and interest. So Bernie will get into it.
Yeah, but I mean, you know, if we, if we take the money out of there, then we don't have to raise the mill levy as much.
Understood. It's, it's just what the levy does to us and the lid. Bernie will tie it together, but I just bring it up since you brought it up.
And of course, I'm looking at, you know, this, this fund's going to end in 2022. And of course, we've talked about renewing it early so we can do some better projections. And so, you know, when I look at what we have here, I think that's a resource there we can, we can tap into that's not going to do any harm.
I think some of the mechanics that Bernie's going to get into now will kind of help highlight some of what Jason is saying as well. So with that, if there's no further questions about what I presented, I will hand it over to our director.
I've got a couple, but I don't know who they go to.
Okay.
One is on page one under discussion in the red book.
Page one?
Yep, well, I guess it's page one, it's not numbered.
Okay.
Okay, the last paragraph said, "The city has experienced an increase of 2.6% in sales tax revenue through the month of May compared with 2017." And then down at the bottom, it says, "Projected budget revenues are behind over 83,000, based upon the one cent sales tax." What does that mean?
So that's again, what I, what I referenced earlier about we've compared actual to actual or year to date. And what we're saying is compared to budget, that's what we're budgeting, is a decrease in sales tax slightly.
So just, I struggled with this too when I read it. But going back, and Bernie, you might be able to help out here too, 2017, we, we went negative. So for 2018, we set a budget that is close to 2016 figures. We're having an increase in revenue from 17 to 18, but we're below where we were in 16. So we're an increase from last year, but we're still below where we budgeted. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but my, my problem is that's not what it says. Unless I, I've read a lot of budgets. And I, I think we, we just need to make sure that we put it all in the same language. If it's revenue, it's revenue, it's budget, it's budget. And those aren't the same. So the other one I have is maybe a little bit like Commissioner Butler's. Want to read through all the tables. You know, there are some things that we had a discussion about last year that I want to make sure is clear. One being this $500,000 for the, for the.
Conference center.
But in the conference center, thanks. And if it's split out, it's hard to find. Likewise, when I was trying to find, you know, the, the street and sidewalk issue, and when I was trying to find the parks and rec issue, which we added to property tax, or excuse me, it's a sales tax point two, right?
Hmm, 2.5 on park and rec, yep.
So when you look back at page, I think it's 191 and 195 and so on, you can find it there. But when you read down the general ledger, I guess that's what these are. I mean, the, the numbers in 191 and 195 are 318 on, I guess, in expenditures. Is that right? The code number is 318?
For street, sales tax, yes, it's 3181010.
And it's the same thing for parks and rec is also coded 318.
That's the number for sales tax.
Okay, and when I look at the funds, those are some, I've forgotten, I don't have it marked. Oh, yes, I do. It says Trails and Rec Fund, 114. And the one above that's 113. And then the Special Streets and Highway, which is not bad, I don't think, is 118. So I'm trying to find correlating pieces of what we did so that I can put them on this, on the sheet on page three.
Okay.
Wherever they go.
So the Special Street Maintenance Fund is one, page 199, as you stated, which is the point.
I'm trying to find when, you know, up here at the front.
Yes.
Yeah, they're both, they're both there. So on page three, line 16.
Okay.
That's that Trail and Rec Fund.
That's 114, is that a fund?
That's a fund number.
Fund number.
But that's not the same as 318?
Correct, it's not.
That's an accounting, that's an accounting code. So we can make sure that we know when.
Commissioner, this, what you see off, right off to the title on page three is the fund number. What you're seeing in the detail sheets is our element object, which is a very in-depth accounting term of how we do our accounting string of codes.
Okay, and is there one for the point two roads on here?
Number 31.
Yes.
So that's 31. Special Street Maintenance Fund.
Correct.
And that correlates to page, whatever it is, 199?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
They should all be in the same order that is presented on page three.
Yeah, all right. Okay, then when you look in the back for the special revenue funds, the, the enterprise funds and bond and interest funds, they all equal, in other words, a revenue expected or revenue budgeted equals the expenditure expected or budgeted again.
They have to under Kansas law.
Yeah. So the next question is, you know, when we looked at streets and, or not streets, when we looked at water, wastewater in particular, and we saw the charts that showed how much we needed versus how much we thought we'd be bringing in by doing, you know, the change in how we, how we build for that. So we made it more equitable and so on. There's big bubbles in there. So the question is, what can these special funds be used for? Do they, by Kansas law, I know they have to equal revenue versus expense, but can they be moved into other things?
Yes.
Yes.
So if we see bubbles where revenue exceeds expense, because we're still charging, when you're a consumer, a citizen, you're paying property tax, sales tax, and you're paying your water bill and all of that. So it all comes out of the same paycheck. So if we could move it and we have a surplus somewhere, I know there's risk in that, but I'm just asking the vanilla question, can it be moved?
We're going to talk about that in a moment.
Okay. Okay. But, but the answer is?
Yes.
Yes. Depending on the fund, but majority, yes.
Sorry for the torture.
No.
Shall I stand for questions first, Commissioner? What I want to do is take a little bit different approach. First, I, I'm going to apologize for the first work session. And the lack of information that you had is entirely on my shoulders because we were grappling with the tax lid. And I told management, this simply isn't the time to be talking about the detail that you typically get at the first work session. And I noticed that each one of you noticed that, even Commissioner McKee, who's new to this, I think felt that, and certainly the Mercury did. And I'll take full responsibility for that because I told management, we simply are not in a position at this point to be giving information out to the extent that we did in this work session. And I think this is typically what you would expect at the first work session. So I do apologize for that. There's a couple of other issues that came out, and I want to thank Commissioner Johnson. Anecdotally, we already, we always knew that the fortunes of Fort Riley and Kansas State have an effect on our sales. And you raised the question about the metrics and the measurement, and I think you got a memoranda that clearly showed that that is there. And when you look at it, I frankly was even a little bit surprised because while we knew that, and I track these sales taxes all the time, looking at things that might happen by current deployments or whatever, and we see those trends, even going clear back to the Kuwaiti conflict, when we actually saw a major decrease in sales taxes because at the time, Fort Riley was basically deployed entirely to the Middle East. So I appreciate that. The other thing that Commissioner Key brought up, and we actually had a chance to talk about this just briefly, was about vendors and whether or not we could actually show what cumulative amounts were being spent for vendors. We have posted on our website, albeit a generic PDF, but it's easy to get through, and it's alphabetized A through Z, all of our vendors, year-to-date cumulative. So you can find it very easily on the website, and it's, at least it's a partial step. So I appreciate your comments on that as well, Commissioner McKee. What I want to do this evening is take you a little bit through the tax lid, and not to raise concerns, but probably some frustrations. I, I, this is the fourth tax lid in my career that I've been through. The third one was the best because they actually lifted the tax lid, and there wasn't one. And it made perfect sense to me because it put the pressure back on you as elected officials where I think it belongs. Unfortunately, we are under a tax lid now, and my judgment is it's going to become more onerous as time goes on. So notwithstanding those of you that may favor a tax lid, I think it's going to cause a little bit of concern for you as commissioners and future commissioners as well. If you notice from this particular review, the implementation date was in January of 2017 for this year's budget in 2018. The first year to go through this, and you'll see this through some of the numbers, really wasn't that difficult because we were established in basically a base year under the tax lid. As I looked ahead last year to 2019, both Hillary and I, I think, had the same concern that we began to see some things on the horizon that weren't going to be quite as favorable for us. As we move through 2020, 2021, and 22, and beyond, I think it's going to become even more difficult. You'll know that, notice that the growth in property taxes generally is subdued by a five-year rolling average of the Consumer Price Index. And then, of course, we can establish an election to override this, but unfortunately, the mechanics to do that are still very unclear. And when I talked to, recently to the Department of Administration, they said that they did not have a city that really had an election. And those, I think there was one small city that did, but it was so late in the year that the budget was already set. And they simply lived with the results, and I think were frankly over the lid as a result.
Real quick, has any city challenged the tax lid in any way?
No. Grouse, I suppose, but that's about all we've, that's been able, that's been done at this point, Commissioner. Let me, I, I, I thought about showing you the template. I'd be glad to do that. If you want to come to my office sometime and take a look. It's, it's difficult to see, but hopefully this will explain it somewhat. There's, there's a net tax-based levy that's established, and that next, net tax-based levy is the total property taxes that were levied, in this case in 2017. And you subtract from that those outside agencies, the library and RCPD, that you really don't have any responsibility for, other than that charter ordinance that you mentioned, Commissioner. And then, from there, you, you take that difference and you establish then the Consumer Price Index off the remainder amount. So when you talk about the tax-based levy net, you can see how it grew. And then you look at other revenue adjustments, I could have done the CPI before that, I suppose, but the other revenue adjustments really stem from things that are particular to Manhattan. And two that came out, and we didn't use it in 2018, this year, because we didn't need it. But when Hillary and I looked at this, Hillary said, "We probably will have to take advantage of the Lowry settlement" because judgments against a city or county can be taken separately in order to help account for that expenditure that's made, in this case, in the bond and interest fund. So when you notice that other revenue adjustments jumping from 62,000 to 430,000, half of that is the Lowry settlement, which by the way, is paid out in full in 2021. So when you think ahead of some issues, we'll lose that as a exemption in 2021. The other change that we made, initially, they said, "Any special assessments that a city pays on behalf of city-at-large expenditures," we're talking about street widenings, oversizing of utilities, things that, that we require developers to make as a result of a benefit district being formed, can be exempted. And I had used initially for 2018, 3%. Rena Neil, our city controller, said, "You're way off." And she did a quick math, and she said, "It's a little over 9%." So I used 9%. That added to that amount. So those are two huge adjustments right there. Then we look at the Consumer Price Increase, and now you can begin to see some of the difficulties behind the tax lid. Because now, we're looking at a CPI difference of only about, little less than $10,000 in additional property taxes that can be levied. The tax-based and new improvements, and here's one of the real frailties, I think, of the tax lid and how it was sought through. You'll notice on, I think it's on page three of your, your book, I think you've got that, the levy sheet that I know some of you were certainly looking for.
Yeah.
It's on page five, okay, thank you, Commissioner. And you'll notice that, clear at the bottom on those, on those double-edged lines at the bottom, you'll notice, I, I made this little footnote saying of, of what the increase in property taxes might be based on new improvements and on changes in market, which really are new taxes to us. It totals almost 800,000. But when you look at this, you'll notice that we're only getting credit for basically, in this case, a loss of about 16.5. And it's one of those strange anomalies in the tax lid that doesn't take into account what the true increase in valuation truly is.
Bernie, wasn't that the whole intent of these people when they did the tax lid, was to alleviate the problem between the mill levy staying as it is, and then assessments keep going up, so you keep paying more money? And so what they were trying to do was level that out. So what they've accomplished is exactly what they intended to do.
Well, perhaps so, Commissioner, but unfortunately, what they've done is made the budgeting process, I almost think intolerable because it's going to create problems down the road. There's no simple solution to try to control property taxes when you're a state legislature. There's no way to do it. And all we have to do, of course, is look at their own fiscal house to realize they're in more disarray than we are, or that we will be, I think. I should add that Hillary had mentioned that we have a 3% increase in valuation. We've already found out, we got the figures from both Riley and Potawatomi, so on our third work session on the 26th, you'll get an update to this. And it's less, it's down to 2.7 increase. Now, that won't affect us too much on the tax lid. It's only about $10,000 less in assessable property taxes. The second side of it here, and you, now you begin to see how much these outside agencies and their property tax that they are able to raise really do work in our favor. RCPD and library are both going to go up, their levies, I think subsequently are going to go up as well. And they will account for the biggest change, positive change, in our property taxes. But the thing I want to call your attention to are the ones that, that you as a commission and certainly management are responsible for, municipal court, fire department, airport security, and our bond and interest fund. All of those, we are getting less money than we did in 2018. And I don't think the, the outlook in future years is going to be any better. In fact, I'm going to guess it's going to be more difficult. So when we talk about, and Commissioner Miller, moving the conference center into EcoDevo to pay for the debt, I sat back and, and I was cringing because we need to find more things we can push into the bond and interest fund. And that's a terrible thing. And it's another one of those problems with the tax lid. It forces cities. And I've talked to my counterparts across the state, and they say the same thing. It's forcing us to raise our bond and interest fund artificially, in some cases, because we do have other revenues that we could, you know, apply and keep that burden of that bond and interest fund from going up. But it doesn't work that way.
It, it really doesn't allow it to move up and down as it naturally would. You're so afraid to have it go down, for when it does spike back up, you won't have the ability to levy the tax.
That's exactly, I was going to say the same thing. It truly disenfranchises elected officials from lowering the mill levy and, and, and moving around funds.
And I'm still glad, it's a, it's a great segue, Commissioner McKee, into where we're going. It, this has nothing to do about mill levies. I know for commissioners it does. The mill levy is, is really the barometer for, in your minds, of where we're going. And when we talk about a, a 50-mill, mill levy potentially plus, that looks horrendous, compared, especially when I think back to, as Hillary said, those Camelot years, when we were actually decreasing the mill levy for the city for a number of years. And you'll see this momentarily. But in this case, the key is property taxes. And it's the total property taxes that you can raise. And in our case, it's 29,346,000. But Commissioner, I want to tell you, we're only about 50,000 under that tax lid right now. And so if you're looking ahead, you can see some of the dilemmas that we're going to be in, I think, as we look then for the 2020 budget. Okay? And this includes, this includes all the growth of the exemptions and things that we just talked about.
Yeah, I'm, I'm missing something here, maybe it's just me, but if we take, you know, half a million dollars out of the Economic Development Fund and use it to pay the interest in the bond and interest fund, then that means that's half a million dollars we don't need to raise in property taxes.
That's right. And it...
So isn't that a good thing?
No, it's going to kill us, Commissioner, on the, on the tax lid. I, I know, it, it doesn't make sense, but it's true. And I think Hillary and I have looked at this until we're just tired of it. And I'd be glad to show you, because obviously, I'm already looking ahead to 2020 and 2021 on the tax lid and beginning to say, "Okay, how can we raise the bond and interest fund?" Or where can we find some of those exemptions like the Lowry case, which will expire in 2021, to help us out, to give us more room, if indeed, revenues stay flat?
So what you're trying to say is if you have more debt, that allows you to raise more taxes?
Sure does.
Well, I, I think one way to look at it...
But we got to figure out a way to get around that because that's just not going to fly. That makes absolutely no sense.
It's a multi-year look at a fund. And, you know, what's a little bit unusual than, you know, your home financing with the city, we made commitments four years ago that will come due. So the next four years of commitments have already been made. So your bond and interest mill levy, we can show you what it's going to do. And when it dips down, because you have a year where your, your debt load drops, it comes back up because you've issued debt two years ago that'll come online. The lid will, will pinch it. It won't let you. That EcoDevo fund you were relying on now becomes your only source, or another source of revenue becomes your only source because property tax can't do it.
So then that was my question. And so if we made the interest payment out of the EcoDevo fund this year, it essentially forced us to do it every year preceding that until it's paid off?
It wouldn't necessarily force you. It's going to put you in a position every year where you're trying to find revenue because your lid won't allow you to raise your levy to support your fund.
Got it.
But, but I still think it's doable. And then the other thing, you know, if you can, if you can exempt RCPD, can airport security fit into that?
We do. And, and indeed, it's, it's exactly a, a, Commissioner, part of our problem because municipal court is part of the security issues that we're looking at, along with airport. But the cost of those, if you look at that, and then look what happened in 2018, we were able to exempt a lot, 272,000. But this year, with the increase in salaries, you don't have much to exempt. Because those people were hired, 2018, we took advantage of that. In 2019, you're only taking into advantage of the incremental amount of increase of those costs from those individuals.
This to me, Bernie, is a little bit like some of the tax law. In other words, for federal tax, in order to maximize your advantage, you move everything you can into the exempt lines.
It's a good analogy.
And here, we're, because of the way it's put together, we're now at ceiling, or within $50,000 ceiling. So, and next year arguably will be...
Yeah. And I, and I guess that's exactly the point because unless, unless I can convince Scott to raise the fire budget, fire budget up a million dollars, we're not going to see those kinds of increases, you see, that we, that we really need in order to make this tax lid work in our favor.
It is part of the reason we showed you our other revenue streams, because they're getting pinched. We've used them, we've relied on them, and now we're getting to a point where the only revenue source you have at your disposal at this point in time to raise is property taxes. Now, communities are growing, and when I say growing, I mean revenue growing from sales tax, they're doing okay. And it's not to say Manhattan can't get back there. I think we will. But we're definitely dealing with a trough right now. And it, it's causing us to pause a little bit in terms of how we want to budget for 19 and 20.
I, I spoke with the finance director from Overland Park, one of the growth communities, obviously. They're within 400,000 of the tax lid, and I was stunned. I would have never thought that a city like Overland Park would be getting close, and he, he thought he was getting close. And I said, "Well, you haven't seen anything until you see the city of Manhattan." And I explained our situation on the revenue getting, short, slowing down, and it was pretty understandable. I, I haven't heard from the majority of my counterparts because, again, we're a little bit further ahead, I think, in the process than they are. But I, in talking with the state and the Department of Administration, they indicated that there are numbers of cities that are... they indicated that there are numbers of cities that are, especially the smaller ones, that aren't seeing that kind of revenue growth that are going to really be hurt by this.
Do the counties have a similar problem? The thing that comes to mind is, we're looking at the radio purchase and the RCPD increase. For the county, most of that could be accounted for security.
And I'm going to guess that it will, Commissioner. I haven't really talked to Rich Vargo about this, but I'm going to guess that's true.
So that's really an advantage-
Works in their favor. So it is about property taxes, not about mill levies, and not to discount the mill levies. But right now, I worry about the property taxes. And of course, I guess by now, this is kind of overstated. Obviously, it would appear, based on property taxes, that we shouldn't have any issue. Well, we do. And I think we will continue to have those, and I think it'll continue to be a problem. So now, let me talk just briefly about some of the issues. And I think Hillary touched on these, and some of you as commissioners had questions about this. But budgeting, again, you might have heard this from the first work session, is difficult. There's, we're looking at budgets, and we're looking at usually two years prior on actuals when we set, for instance, this year's budget, 2016, and only a small part of 2017 were the focus of how we set that 2018 budget. As a result of what happened then in 2017, it would appear that we may have a shortfall of somewhere around 1.1 million, give or take. I think it's going to be less than this. I don't think it will be this because there are some indicators that, and building permits was one of those. Mr. Hilders spoke to that as well. So I think there's going to be some good things that will help us turn the corner. But in terms of the budget, we're still, you know, right now, I don't think we'll have 150,000 shortfall in sales taxes. We're 83,000 right now through May. And half of that goes to the general fund, and the other half of that remaining goes to the general fund. So we might end up with about 100,000 instead of 150,000. But as we set the 29 budget, the 2019 budget, sorry, then that becomes the issue. And we try to say, okay, well, we shouldn't probably budget the same thing in sales taxes that we did when we had 2016 as kind of the shining point. So we're budgeting less. And you can see where these shortfalls occur. Now, I don't know, this is just looking at just this set of revenues, okay? Some of the revenues in the general fund have gone up, but the majority are fairly flat. So it's just looking at these five. And it would appear to me that we're going to be about 752,000 short a budget change in 2019 compared to the budget for this year. Well, if that happens, then part of what we're suggesting is this. Of the 1.1 million increase in general fund taxes, I think 752,000 of that is because of revenue shortfalls that I think are going to occur. It may not be that much. We don't have to budget that kind of a shortfall. We could budget more. But again, you're taking a little bit of a risk when you do that. That would leave about 365,000 for operational increases and expenses. Okay, the remaining million then is spread across a number of different tax funds. And this gives you a picture of how that looks. The saving grace in all of this was the Kansas Police and Fire. It's going down appreciably in terms of property taxes because of a large cash carryover. And it's one of the exceptions to our beginning cash balances compared to some of the others, the main one being the general fund, which I'll talk about here momentarily. So total taxes, 2.2 million. On page five on that tax sheet, you can see how the numbers line up and correlate. I realize that taxes going up and mill levies now going over 50 mills potentially, it's a hard pill to swallow. If you go back and look over the broader period, our annual increase has been about $15 in the general fund. Those things that are under the control, not just the general fund, but under the control of the city manager over this period of time. Now, I'll be quite honest, Commissioners, that's not the last four or five years. They've gone up considerably. And the numbers I think you were throwing out when Hillary was up here are probably fairly accurate. But over time, it hasn't been a huge burden. And whether or not we want to take the long look, I don't know. You're going to hear me talk about looking ahead here in a minute and some of the things that I would really like to get the commission on board with as we wrap up this second budget work session.
Let me ask you a quick question, Bernie. This is back one slide behind, I think, maybe two, for the proposed property taxes.
This one, Commissioner, or one before this?
One more back.
Okay.
So we've got the 751, and I see where that comes from. So that's over on the right-hand side of the previous slide, which is projected budget change, which is kind of your estimate based upon the initial position. So then we have 752, which is, I guess, about 751. So the remaining 1,095, where did that number come from?
If you add the 752 and the 365 together, I'm going the wrong way. You'll get the 1.17, or 1.11 million in the general fund. And that remaining 1,098,000 then is spread out over the rest of these. So when you do the math, again, that KPNF fund added in gives you the total property taxes of roughly 2.2 million.
So 752 and 365 is 1117.
And then the remaining 1,098 is-
You just subtracted that from the 2 million, from the 2.2.
Yes.
I got it now.
Looking ahead, and now we can speak to some of the things, I think, again, Commissioner Dotson, you mentioned it on transfers. That 2018 number is a little bit deceiving that we budgeted and started with. It's actually 1,740,000. Well, I know it's below that, but right now, 1,740,000. It actually ended up about 1,340,000. We had to shore it up. And we had to actually transfer some worker comp money, as I recall, into the general fund to get that balance back up. It's a dangerous game, Commissioners. And it's one that you simply can't do as we look ahead, 2020, 2021, and beyond that. Can't do it. I honestly don't think we'll end up with $2 million to start 2019. We might. But we're going to have to make some major decisions on the expenditure side in order for us to get there. Because I don't think we could do it on the revenue side. If you look at this set of revenues, and this isn't all of the revenues, but I want you to see part of the problem we've got. In 2017, these, just these revenues, just these, make up about 83% of the general fund budget. But look what happens as we project the 2019 budget and then 2020 and 2021. Those same revenue sources, not all of the general fund, but just these, actually drop over 10%. And now they're only 72% of the general fund. And that's presuming, that is presuming that we're going to carry forward $2 million all three years, which I don't think we will in 2019. And I can't speak to 2020 and 2021. It poses a major issue for you as Commissioners and for management and for department heads. And I wish, you know, I'm old enough now that I think I know enough of the little nuances of how to find some of those magic bullets that you could pull out and make things work. And I'm, either I'm getting too old to think creatively or there just aren't many avenues. One that was mentioned, and I think, again, Commissioner Dotson, was you, was transfers. Because obviously, you can, as a commission, make those decisions. And we could move 500,000 every year from water and wastewater over to the general fund. But Commissioners, I'm going to tell you, you cannot do that. You can, I wouldn't even recommend it beyond 2019. But you just simply can't make that part of your strategy for the foreseeable future. It just won't work. And you're going to create a dilemma. It took some time for us to get, especially the stormwater, as Brian knows, into some kind of a workable form. When I first came on back in 2000, the second time, for the city of Manhattan as your finance director, we were spending probably a third of our special street and highway in salaries. And I told Ron and Jason and Diane Stoddard at the time, we can't do that. We can't, how can you fix roads if you're spending all your money on salaries out of the fund that is supposed to be there to rehabilitate streets, rehabilitate streets? And it took us two or three years. And, you know, management was gracious to work with me to move that money out and get it back in the general fund where it belonged. And of course, at the time, we were experiencing some unusual growth, so we were able to do it. State of Kansas threw us a little bit of a wringer because they stopped state revenue sharing. And LAVTR, Local Ad-Alarm Tax Reduction Funds, cost us $1 million. But again, management was aware of that possibility. And so we planned for that. And we started downsizing those revenues at about the same time we were moving salaries over into the general fund. And when it did discontinue, and the legislature indeed discontinued those funds, even though they're still in the statutes and they still owe us that money annually, we were able to make things work. I don't have a magic bullet for you here, but Commissioners, I'd be very cautious about moving, transferring utility money to the general fund. You can get by with it if that's your direction to management, but you can't do it. I would say one year at the most. It's just simply going to work against you in the future. Here's what the beginning cash balances look like. And I don't know, again, that 2019 is going to do anything else to this trend line. But we have, we used to carry roughly 3,000 to 4,000, or 3,4 million as a beginning cash carryover in the general fund. And those of you that do read our bond rating reports, you'll notice that that's a constant worry of all three of those agencies because we don't have a cash balance policy. And we don't have because I don't know how you're going to fund it. And for me to tell you that we need to be adding to the general fund cash balance is counterintuitive when we've got so many other issues and the tax lid being one of those that are facing us. On the expenditure side, there is another issue. And I won't even look to my fellow staff members on this, but it's Personnel Services. It's a big part of what we spend on an annual basis. And it's not because you've got 380 employees that are making a hell of a lot of money in doing the jobs they do. It's because the city has grown dramatically, and you hire people to do the job. Now, if the city slows down, maybe it does go hand in hand that you begin to lose people. But I kind of agree with Deputy City Manager Hilders. This is just a lull. And we're going to be growing again. And you can see that at the NBAF site. And I know that the better days of Manhattan are ahead of us. So the idea of all of a sudden cutting salaries as the prime way to reduce expenses to meet ending cash balances, I'm not sure that's the best option. Now, I mentioned one other, and one reason I wanted to show you this. We've got roughly 300,000, at least in 2019, for debt service. Now, it does go down because some of those lease purchases get paid off. I think that ought to be in the bond and interest fund. Now, again, Commissioner Butler doesn't want to hear that. But those are the kind of things that I'm looking at to try to find ways to make the tax lid work as best it can in our favor. If you look at personnel, it's going up, there's no question. And that blurb that you see was actually moving the health insurance out of the general fund to the employee benefit fund where it belongs. And that, frankly, Commissioners, is one of the best alternatives when we talk about advocating, is to get the employee benefit fund exempt from the tax lid. That would help us considerably and would probably make 2020 and 2021 much less worrisome if we can do that. I know there's been discussion in the legislature, but whether or not there's the legislative will to do that, I can't tell you. But again, Personnel Services have been, always probably will be, typical of almost any city in the state of Kansas, 70% of our general fund budget. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. I will say this, if I could. Two things before I stand for questions. I think there's two things, Commissioners, that we need. I think it's going to take your help. Obviously, we can be a catalyst. We need a budget strategy for the future. We need to be looking ahead. I'll be quite honest with you, and I'm going to say this at the expense of getting chastised tomorrow by Jason. We spent an awful lot of time talking about transit guest taxes or other things, or mill levies, and worrying about what the school district or the county are doing. And not near enough about what the problems that we're facing. And I realize that it is, it is a mixed bag. Because again, what the school does, what the county does, is indirect debt for the city. And that's mentioned in the rating agencies' reports and the conversations I have with them on the phone. We need a strategy, Commissioners. The second thing is, I mentioned the employee benefit fund. We probably need to think about another revenue enhancement that can augment the general fund and find a way, I don't think it's going to come from transfers, from utility funds, but something that is more permanent, that gives us a little bit of breathing room, and that gives us a chance to keep that property tax levy down in the general fund. I think that's part of a strategy. I think it's something that we need. And I would really encourage us as a city, both management as well as you as Commissioners, to be thinking about that for the future. And again, now I'm ready to stand for any questions you might have.
See, Bernie, you mentioned this debt service, lease purchases?
Yes.
Moving into the bond and interest fund? And, I mean, what would be the purpose of that? I mean, it doesn't change anything, right?
Well, it does.
What does it change specifically?
Well, general fund levy goes down, bond and interest levy goes up. It works in our advantage, to our advantage.
Okay, but that isn't going to change somebody's tax rate, though, out there?
No.
Okay, so I don't have a problem with that. I mean, you mentioned I might have a problem with it, but I don't. Because I understand that isn't going to affect the bottom line of what somebody's going to pay out there. If it did, then I'd probably be against it. Now, generally, I'd like to see our total bond and interest amount drop-
Sure, I would too.
-if possible. But, you know, if you're concerned about that, and if that's part of the strategy you need, then I would support that. I don't see that doing anything. That's just moving something from one box to another. And if that gives us an advantage, then do it.
Go down. Yeah, Hillary mentioned it changes the tax lid, which is positive for us. Yeah, yes, yeah.
I wanted to ask you about the employee benefit fund. If we were successful, well, first of all, about that fund. I think it behooves us to pursue that at the legislative level. pursue that at the legislative level as strong as we can. I, I think there was a certain receptivity to it in the legislature this year, but by the time the end of the session came, it just kind of gave up and didn't happen. But I think that at least our local legislators think that there'll be a better chance next year, so I think it's important that we push. The other question about the employee benefit fund is, how much breathing room would it give us if we were successful in moving it? And how long are we, and you're looking at through 2020, 2022?
This, this again is...
Yeah, so very...
I, I want to be completely honest with you.
Yeah.
If you look at the employee benefit fund, which is page 171, you'll notice that when we made the change to move health insurance over, we followed that with sales taxes to the, to the employee benefit fund to keep that mill levy down. If it's exempt, if those, if those expenses are exempt, it gives us that ability to move some of those sales taxes elsewhere, perhaps back to the general fund...
Free amount.
...to give us a little bit more flexibility in, in, as a revenue source. And now, obviously, not all at once, and all of this, I, I want to make sure Commissioners, you understand that management, as well as obviously finance, we're terribly sensitive about this mill levies and the issue of property taxes. And I feel like I'm standing up here saying that there's ways to try to cook the books on the tax lid, and that's, that's, that's not true. But it's here, I don't see it being repealed anytime soon. I wish it were. I would, I hope that it happens at some point. But if it doesn't, we've got to find some creative ways, given any other revenue enhancement that might come along for the general fund, we have to find ways to make everything work well, and still try to keep, hopefully, property taxes reasonable.
The other thing I wanted to say is that I'm looking forward to, to an active discussion about strategies for the future, and on different revenue sources, and what might be possible. I'm, I'm really hopeful that the internet sales tax will help at some point, but I, I'm not sure, I don't know how to think about other possibilities either, so the staff would need to help us in a future discussion of that. Commissioners, you have other questions?
Yeah, I was going to ask about, you know, we, we're concerned about having, you know, at least a $2 million, you know, carryover starting balance. I guess we don't have that labeled as a special fund or anything, right?
No.
A reserve? But if you're looking for a strategy, could you do that, and then look at, you know, because we've got extra money sitting around in some of these other accounts that you were talking about, you don't want to transfer because it'll affect the tax lid? But what if you had a reserve fund, and you just transferred that money to sit in there collecting interest anyway into that account so you have the starting balance? Is that something that you could investigate?
Well, you know, it's, it's, yes, we could, yes.
You have something called a reserve fund that's only got like $60,000, though, right? That's a start, then?
Yes, well, that's, and that, of course, is really intended to pay for deductibles and to hopefully lower the cost of insurance in the future, which again, is one of those expenditure issues, to try to give us some breathing room in the general fund.
As I was looking over, this is on page seven, one of our favorite charts here. And if you go out to the right where it says per capita, see, it's property taxes. I'm trying to figure out why. I mean, all the rest of them, when I kind of did the numbers, we are in the, not only are we at 50%, or in the middle, we are below the middle. This one, we're about third from the top. And I'm trying to figure out why that number is so high. Is that, you see the 494 up there?
Yes.
So we have 27 million of property tax levy, and that, that means per capita 494, nobody, well, there's only a couple that are even close to us.
Well, part of that, I think, Commissioner, is our population is somewhat stalled as well. I think partially due to K-State, partially to Fort Riley. And so those numbers haven't gone up. I try to keep the Manhattan numbers current. So I, I think that 54,000, we'd have to ask Eric, but I think that's the, the latest one that we're, that we're dealing with. Most of these other cities appear to be growing, at least some of the, most of the larger ones, and that obviously works against us as we, as you do that per capita.
It's really a ratio, though, of the amount of property taxes that are being levied to the population number. So in the 2018 property tax levy, it's taking that against the second column of population and giving you a per capita basis. So if you go two lines up to Lenexa, line 13, you'll see theirs is at 663. They have $8 million more in a property tax levy, but there are $2,000, or 2,000 people below us in population. So it's a ratio of that number against each other.
Yeah, I, I think he knows where it's coming from. What I would challenge you to look at, too, is another revenue source, is their sales tax rate. Ours is pretty low compared to other first-class cities in the KC metro area. Most people are taking advantage of other revenue streams other than property taxes, a lot of them over 9%.
I was just, for example, looking at Lawrence. So they've got 33 million property tax divided by 95,000 people.
Yeah.
Which gets them down to that 347 per capita basis.
And then if you look at the sales tax, you know, it's right at nine. So that doesn't, to me, doesn't explain...
Well, that full percentage in Manhattan would be over a million dollars in revenue.
Yeah.
In Lawrence, it's more than that.
Yeah, but I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't help much in this valuation of 27 million versus 33. So if they're twice as big as us almost, they're not twice as valuable as us. See where I'm going with that?
Sure.
So...
Well, they almost are.
They're levying though...
560 to 995.
Huh?
560 million is our valuation, their valuation's 995 million.
But this was, this is this, this column that says property taxes levied.
Yeah, on the levy.
Yes, they're levying 6 million more, only 6 million more property taxes than we are.
Yeah. Bernie?
So there's a difference in kind of how we spend.
Does the 27 million, does the 27 million, that's us, RCPD, library, et cetera? So does any of that stand to account for the fact that by state statute, we're paying property tax? I mean, they're able to mix some of their revenue sources to help pay for some of that that we don't control for RCPD. So, I mean, that's a portion of it, of how we're created to pay that amount, versus being able to take some of those other sources that Jason mentioned, like sales tax, and move it around a little bit more.
Sure, good point, Tom.
The, the other one kind of gets back to this thing of strategy, you know, that if the strategy has to do with maximizing what we can do within the amount of revenue we get and the expenses we have, that's one strategy, but it's not very effective. I mean, the only thing that does is get you around the rules, or let you maximize within the existing rules. So the real question is, how do you control expenditures at the same time trying to grow revenue? That's, that's not much of a strategy to me. I mean, it's pretty obvious what you have to do to grow revenue. The hard part is controlling expenditures. So that's kind of what we're faced with right now. We know what likely revenue is, but the expenditures are outpacing that. That's the, that's the current strategy we have to work within. And I, you know, somebody said, well, how do you increase revenue? Well, you gotta have more jobs, more businesses, and so you generate more property tax from the existing base, and you also have more sales tax. So, I mean, that's pretty simple.
I think some of what we tried to present tonight, Commissioner, is that with what we've seen, what we're currently experiencing, when we look out to 2020, 2021, those factors that you just stated, not being present in our foreseeable eyesight, looking at a more permanent revenue source to support those expenditures, such as our general sales tax of 1%. As Jason just mentioned, Lawrence being just that alone, a million dollars, it's a stable source that you know, and you track already. So those types of things are really what, instead of the growth that we've counted on in years past, of we know we're growing, we know this is happening, that this is coming in, this is coming to fruition in the revenues, it's not currently.
One of the things I would just, go ahead, you should, I was just going to make a comment about, you know, the strategy also includes, you know, what we have to do in the next six months, knowing we're short on revenues, to address expenditures. And a lot of you have talked about expenditures tonight. We're going to develop things in the next 30 days that we're going to have to implement for the next six months in order to shore up our budget. Those same strategies, I anticipate, we'll be sharing with you. Because as we look at 19, more than likely, we're either going to be looking at revenue, ways to increase revenue, or we're going to be looking at ways to decrease expenditures. And we highlighted it many times tonight, you see how much of our budget is personnel. And even next Tuesday, we're going to have an executive session like we normally do in June, and talk about wages with our union. So those conversations are coming, and they're coming fast, and we're going to have to figure out where we want to land for 19 on, on how we pay our people. But there are going to be strategies for the next six months that'll go beyond our typical COLA, cost of living adjustments and our step increases.
When, when you talked about the employee, employee benefit fund, what, what exactly do you mean there? What, what does that do for us?
If it was, if it was exempt, right now, it's...
So this just helps on tax lid?
Well, it helps, yes. It, it helps on the tax lid, Commissioner, but it also gives us that ability to be a little bit more flexible with the sales taxes that we've, that we have committed to that fund when we move the health insurance over.
Currently, if it were an exempt, that page five, that valuation sheet, what it's increasing by the 164,000, that's what would be exempt, that difference in the tax lid.
So one thing I like that we've done consistently is that we haven't really looked at decreasing salaries or taking away COLA. And I take great pride in that because that's one of the main areas for any agency, personnel is the first place they look. K-State stopped giving raises for several years, USD 333. As a teacher, I didn't get raises for several years. Government agencies all across the board haven't gotten raises off and on. They eventually got them back, but they don't make it up. But we haven't done that to RCPD or for Citi, and I don't think Riley County has done it either. And that's mainly because there's so much competition, mainly for everybody that's coming and going, but also as we're raising all of our fees and rates and everything else, they have to find a place to pay for it, for, from. So, excuse me, I have a dry mouth there. I don't want to look at that. As far as the rest of the expenditures, something that I constantly hear is, you're raising taxes when we're growing, and you're raising taxes when we're not growing. At what point do you stop raising taxes? And that's a, you know, a good question, because I think when we're looking at budgets, even though we're down right now, I have a feeling enrollment is going to be down again. We're doing great for the next, these three or four months, we might do well even the next several months. But I think K-State population, if it's at, what, 24,000 at one point, they're almost closer to 21,000 and 20,000 at this point. That impacts us, and that, that takes a while to make up. Our major revenue source is, is sales tax. And I think one of the things we have to do is, as we work with CVB and other agencies, get more people to come here, attend events, spend money, have more growth in our best, in our businesses as far as restaurants and retail, keep them coming as often as we can. Certainly doesn't help when you don't have a state tournament going on here, or when you lose some revenue, we may not get them back as far as basketball. But our taxpayers have been very supportive of our ta, sales tax initiatives. They've supported the parks and rec, and they've supported the street maintenance. So they, I think they value what we do in the city. But when we have a dip like this, and it's going to maybe go a little bit lower, or at least go flat again next year, I think we have to look closer at what we can stop spending on, maybe contractual services, I don't know what that looks like, maybe consultants. Maybe we can slow down a little bit here and there. But I'm not interested in constantly going higher and higher because of a property lid tax. I'm not as worried about the property lid tax. If we come to a point at any commission, and we feel like we've gone too far, our option is to take it to the voters. And so we have to be held accountable if that's what the tax, property lid tax was meant for us to do. And I can't make this decision without considering the $130 million that the school district is looking at, and what Riley County is looking at, and the $15 million that K-State is doing. I can't just pretend that's not happening and just focus only on our, our budget. When we raise tax, it, it impacts me as a taxpayer in my home, as my home appreciates or depreciates, whatever, it impacts me quite a bit, so I think about it even from a personal level. So I'm not interested in being overly concerned as my top priority about what to do with the property tax lid and how can we avoid it. I want to focus as, on a strategy where we can do, make us more efficient, work better, and raise where we have to. And if it's a sales tax thing we need to look at, maybe that's something we need to look at in the future. If it is not replacing all the positions that are leaving through attrition, maybe that's something we need to look into. So those are just some things that I want to consider. The decrease in population, like I said, it showed even in this book, for the first-class cities, ours was the highest, negative 2.6%. And I can't just pretend not to see it. So I don't think we're going to make that up in the next two to three years. We really have to look at cutting back a little bit on our expenses, being a little bit more frugal, being more cautious, counting pennies in some instances. As well as we're doing, we're certainly not in a position of being egotistical, arrogant, or elitist, and thinking we can just have property taxes, property taxes go up and people will take care of it. But Manhattan being what it is, they do like their services, they like the roads, they like the quality of life. And anytime we ask the voters to raise it, or for whatever reason, even for the school district, they usually come through. So I think that's something I want to embrace, but I don't want to take advantage of at the same time. The RCPD, of course, we, we're paying about $16 million of theirs, so that they take a large chunk of our money out, and I think we need to make sure that the public knows that to have safe streets and everything, that it's coming from our budget, most of Major revenue sources, like we talked about the sales tax, we have to work with the chamber and with K-State to get more businesses in. I can't see any other way to do this. If businesses come in, then property value, property evaluations go up, and that will take care of some of the debts, instead of just falling back on the people that have lived here for 20, 30, 40 years and constantly going back to them for that money. So how we recruit them, how do we retain them, how do we make that happen, is a bigger goal for the R2 or the Greater Manhattan Project. That's something we need to work closely with and our legislators. That's something I don't mind investing more money into, because I think that's what's going to make Manhattan a better place. Um, let me see. Some of the things we, for example, we're getting the other airlines coming back in in July, and I was looking at, I, I didn't have a chance to look at page by page, but some of the things that caught my eye, but one of the things that caught my eye was for the airport, there was like, on page 104, they had county sales tax, and I think it's the landing fees, at 115,000 for 2018 and 45 for 2019. And was that because of the decision we made to go back on, on the landing fees to preview? That's a huge chunk. And if we have more landing, and because the budget revenue falls short, about $30,000, if we have more flights and more planes in... if we have more flights and more planes and we're doing all this and that, I would like to see better numbers. That's just a little, a little picture of what I'm talking about. We're doing great, we're growing, but our revenue is not showing yet. So I don't know, can somebody just briefly tell me about that? Nobody? I don't know. Jesse, okay. Do you know what I'm talking about Jesse?
I'd have to look at the detail, I saw I was kinda glancing over at Hillary, but I believe that you're right, when we did a revision to the landing fee, took us down significantly on the, it was a dollar, from a dollar fifty per thousand pounds to a flat rate and then, but we have a nominal increase inflator built into that now. So, it did have an impact to what we were projecting for landing fees.
Yeah, that's, that, that's what I'm talking about, when we're saying we're growing, cuz in 2016 it's at 587,000, 219 is 578,000. And, you know, I'm not even looking, if, if you look at 2018, yeah, we changed the landing fees, but I expect that 587, sorry, 578,000 to be higher when we have larger flights coming and going. And I don't expect all the answers to that, but that's kind of what I'm thinking when we're investing so much in, I hope we're reaping some rewards from it at the same time. And I don't, I don't know how to make that happen and I'm seeing that consistently with some of the things we're, we're doing, and like I said, I haven't skimmed through all of it. I don't wanna be negative, because I think we're doing well. But if we're doing that well, we should see a little bit more. And I don't mind taking a year or, or two and just pulling back a little bit. And that pulling back has to be with, with administration. And I'm not looking at staffing as far as, staffing in the sense, salaries and COLA. Staffing and however you fill in the people that are retiring through attrition and all of that, that's up to you how you do it, that, that, that's your job. But everything else is a little daunting for the city of Manhattan. And I don't wanna get ahead of ourselves and overdo things expecting like miraculous things to happen. We're not quite there yet and whoever gets elected into being the next governor might change the entire landscape again. So I think we need to just be cautious on some of these initiatives that we're looking at. I don't have the answers, but it's definitely going to work through this the next few weeks and try to figure out something that's palatable.
The first and foremost, thank you for posting the vendor list online, that's a, obviously a baby step. And what I wanna say, I was able to show Bernie earlier, Montgomery County, Maryland, which I think's like the house on the hill when it comes to how they detail out their budget and how transparent that whole process is from start to finish in order to break it down. So I'd encourage the rest of the commission to look at that, but that's a start. And I, I think it goes in the right direction. I haven't had time to look at that obviously, cuz you just told me about it. So I'm gonna go home and look at it, but when I was reviewing all of this, the thing that still gives me heartburn is that contractual services line. So one of the things that I did was I looked under the expenditures under contractual services and I just looked at one of them, I looked at the software maintenance agreements. In 2016, 2017, 2018, we stayed relatively flat and then 2019, we're jumping up almost a hundred thousand dollars in just that one line item expenditure. A couple of those are tied to capital improvement programs, which we'll discuss as a commission. But that other kind of 200,000, I guess that's, I guess that's the thing that kinda gives me a little bit of heartburn is, is that stuff that's fall, software that we know we want, but it falls under the RFP threshold? Or is it annual renewal contracts that we're paying?
Three-year renewals.
Okay, and how much of, and, and little things like how much of that is tied to COLA increases? Because I, I kind of agree with Commissioner Reddy and we have to pinch pennies a little bit here, right? And in all the software contracts that I see, there's COLA increases. And I have cities all the time reach out to me and say, you know what, we're having a tight budget year, we've been a customer of yours for 10 years, can you give us a repeat, a reprieve on our COLA for this year or readjust our annuals? And almost every single time we work with them. Again, is that gonna solve our entire budget woes? Absolutely not, but that's the thing, that's why the kind of contractual services line, the commodity line, the rest of that gives me a little bit of heartburn as a whole. And maybe I wouldn't have quite as much angst about it is in the capital improvement program and it might just be something that I'm not seeing and you can show me. But it says the funding source and it says general fund, but not all of them say what it lumps into here. Some of them do, you can tell because like software inherently is gonna fall under the software maintenance and contractual services, but the rest of them aren't that as clear to me and I don't know if that's something that you just need to teach me to be able to look at. But if I could see how much of these were tied to these different sections and see where we're increasing from this, I think it would help me a little bit, does that make sense?
Sure, we can summarize that for you. There also though, on every page of where they're listed within a division's budget, it'll show the line items. So if it is in, say, 4380, which is our, our software maintenance agreement line item in contractual services, it'll be listed at the end of the page under the proposed 2019 capital improvement program. So it should all tie back to that, but if you wanna break down of CIP and where it's going, the majority of it though is in capital outlay, some of it in commodity CIP and just a very, very minimal in contractual. I just wanted to, I meant to mention this during my presentation, but in contractual services is about 4.8 million dollars of, of almost 30 million dollar budget. Over 2 million of that is gas, electricity, phones. So just to give you an idea, the things that have, you have to pay. And those are, just annually, we do a lot of data research on just gas and electricity, fuel and other things like that, trends that are going, what the market is doing. So we research all of these things, but over 2 million of that 4.8 is in keeping these lights on and keeping the room heated.
I just, I think the thing that, and it, it's not me saying that I don't think the city administration's doing everything they can to cut what we can cut in those areas, but it still comes down to the fact that in a few months, I either have to vote on a tax increase or I don't vote on a tax increase. And if I have to be put in that position, I wanna be able to look someone in the eye and say, I looked at every line of the budget and there was no way we could do it other than this way. And until I feel like I'm at that spot, it's gonna be very difficult for me to be okay with voting yes on any of that. So, the vendor list is the first step and I think that's the right step and it might answer a lot of the questions that I have. So maybe next week I'll stop harping on you. But right now it's something that's important to me and some, a piece of information that I think's important because at this point, $10,000 here and there counts for something. I, I would say right now that's probably my biggest thing and I, I would agree with Commissioner Reddy's comments. I, I, right after I got elected, I spoke at several groups and I told them, they asked me what my thoughts about with budget coming up were, and I told a lot of them that the elephant in the room was the school bond issue, because I think that's a huge priority for our community and I also think it lends itself to help us with economic development in the future. And so I, yeah, I, I again echo her comments in saying that I can't make that decision in a bubble, that is something that's going to happen. And I, with state increases, clearly Riley County increases, increases from the library and RCPD, to throw an increase on from the city is something that, that worries me as well. So, again, if I can see every detail, every line possible, I'll feel more comfortable. But right now that's, I still feel like there's a, a portion of the budget that I don't understand and I don't know. Thank you.
My thoughts, you know, I've always wanted to see our budget just sort of increase based on the inflation rate, I've said that for, for seven years. But some specifics, you know, I presented some stuff to the commission last week, I think we've got to put constraints on outside agencies. And I think a one mil cap will help us and I gave you enough documents on that to, to where I think that should be considered and we'll make that a little bit easier. Secondly, I, you know, I agree with what's been said about the concept of lean management, you know, gotta pinch a few pennies, you know, here and there and that means really digging into the details, that's probably best done by the people closest to the problem. And a couple of things that, you know, I've mentioned before, like one I could pull right out, if you look under general government division, administration, that, that's just the, the main staff, we got 38,100 dollar travel budget. And of course, if you go into each department, there's a travel budget. And I know we can pinch a few pennies out of there. I mean, the commission alone last year spent 10,000 on travel. Okay, and I know we can shave some of that off if we're serious about saving a few dollars. And so there are a few things like that where we can, we can pinch some pennies. Now, we had CIP on the, you know, agenda here tonight and one of the ones that we had there was this housing market analysis. We're paying a consultant to tell us housing's not affordable in Manhattan, but we already know that. So, so I'm not sure I buy into that. I get, I get the intent, we wanna make it better, but you know, we're looking at 12 mil increase between local government this year. That's probably a good reason why housing's not affordable in Manhattan and why building permits are dropping and some of the other things that we're concerned about. We're our own worst enemy on that. And so maybe we could look at coming up with a better deal here, rather than pay a consultant, you know, out of the general fund, 11,000, we got spread across stormwater, wastewater, I don't really see that as appropriate. Economic development, fine, but maybe we could look at utilizing K-State, we've done that before, you know, at cheaper rates to do things. Because it, it can't be that hard to figure out why our housing's not that affordable, you know. So, so I'm not a real fan on, on the consultants there, but I'd like to see the, the staff, you know, focus in on the minute details as opposed to, you know, individual commissioners because I think you'll probably do a better job because you're closer to the problem. But, but I know there's some waste there, there always is, and, and there's some things that maybe we just don't need to do. And I've said that before on, you know, various dues and travel and meetings and mileage and all that, you know, pinch a few pennies there and, and it'll make the difference.
One quick comment that I forgot to mention that one reminded me of, are there, on some of these capital improvement programs, is there an option to go out to RFP or bid for them sooner rather than later, just to figure out what the true cost of them would be? Can we go out to bid on any of these in 2018 and say, we have no plans to actually start this project to 2019? What would your cost be?
You could probably do it, but you're gonna have a caveat that they're not gonna hold their prices.
We work projects all the time where we're working into the next budget cycle.
Most of our CIP items-
Some of them, but I'm asking, do we have an option on any of them?
Yeah, there, there could be some. What I'm thinking of is more of our infrastructure type projects, where our, our builders, our contractors, but yet, we could look at that list and see if there's an option. The CIP roughly at 360 right now, more than likely is gonna come down anyway as we look to narrow our gap on the levy increase. But it, there, there could be caveats, you could write into that RFP. Some may not respond just because they know you're not gonna issue it. But if you're, if you're interested in fine tuning some of those costs in terms of, is that the actual or is that just the projected? Yeah, we could do some more research there.
The, the other thing that I wanna know is, again, I trust city staff in making these decisions on some of these smaller expenditures, you're closer to the problem and you understand it. But at the end of the day, again, if I'm gonna vote on a tax increase, I wanna make sure that I understand every line. And Ronald Reagan famously said, trust but verify. I trust you, but I also wanna verify. I wanna be able to ask you why we spent $10,000 annually for the last 15 years on X, Y, and Z, period. I wanna be able to ask that question. And 99.9% of the time, you might have a great answer that I walk away from and say, I agree, but I, I don't feel like that's even an option for me at this moment. So, my asking or pushing for this has nothing to do with, I don't think city staff's capable of doing it. I just wanna be able to honestly look at someone in the eye and say, I poured myself in over this and I did the best that I could and asked the questions that I could to make sure that the budget that we passed was responsible. That's it.
Hey, I don't know who this question would go to, but on page three, line 16 for the Trail and Rec Fund, when we approved the, when the, the sales tax initiative was passed, I thought we weren't going to do anything till it was all, till we got that money in and then start some of that. Is, is this the same thing I'm thinking about when we thought that?
Yeah, so in order, like Hillary mentioned earlier, you, you can't show a revenue stream without an expenditure, we have to balance our budget. So, we're gonna continue to accumulate those revenues.
So this has a dedicated funding source then?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
This is just that renewal, or the, renewal, the quality of life for this new purpose? This, that's the only thing. And basically, we're taking what we'll receive this year, putting it to a balance in 2019 and letting that revenue accumulate.
Okay, I saw expenditures and I thought we're spending 4 million dollars in 2019. Thanks.
Other questions?
Phil, I was just gonna say the, we're, we're looking for magic here, but we've got, the difference between 18 and 19 total is 6.7 million dollars. So, you know, looking at the 10 cent line, it's not gonna get it. The bond and interest fund pretty much takes care of itself, has to do the enterprise funds. So, the special revenue funds, we've got in there 5.2 and then the general fund 1.3. And that's kind of where you have to look to find anything that's gonna help us. So it just takes a little bit of digging here, but you showed the property tax 2.2, you're nuts. Given the calculations, that's pretty realistic, I mean, that's how the numbers come out. So, there's only two places that you can really search. And I, I agree with you that, you know, sometimes on these enterprise funds, you don't wanna harvest things that are gonna hurt you in the long run. But I'm gonna take a look at those curves, cuz my memory was that we've got some bubbles in there until we get to the future. So if we, our forecast is that in a couple of years we'll pick back up. You don't wanna burden the taxpayers any more than you have to in the interim years. So that would be the only, kind of the only objective in that. Cuz again, I agree that you don't wanna harvest funds like that, cuz you depend on them in the out years to, so you don't have things that accumulate costs more rapidly than you can pay for them. And we found out in roads and bridges and everything else, if you don't buy them soon, it just gets worse. So, and, and that's pretty much true of water, wastewater and stormwater, so. But it's, it's worth taking a look at. The other thing I'd ask you to do, and you've given me these things before, I've got a couple of ideas. You know, one is internet sales tax and the other one I won't mention in this forum right here, but can you kind of tell us about the, the local ad valorem and the local reduction in tax and revenue? There's two things that the state did years ago, I think during Governor Sebelius' term that have not been redone. So if you could provide those, just to give us some kind of a scale for what we're missing. There's, there's probably only, maybe a couple of other things we can think about in the way of strategy here, but we're gonna have to reach some accommodation with the state in the relatively near term or, otherwise we're gonna stagnate. I mean, if, if we don't have the revenue to make the kinds of investments we need to, then it's gonna be very difficult to grow. This is true not only for us, I mean, as you know, you can see it across the state, they're all on the same, same boat.
I think I'll just say the same thing, but that Mike just said, but I, I'd be interested in revenue sources that other cities and counties are using that we might not be, we've not pulled in or engaged yet, like for economic development kinds of growth, we just are now considering a commercial improvement district, a CID. That's new for us and it's been out there for a while and we just haven't needed it or didn't have an effective use for it. But there may be some other revenue kinds of things that, because if state law doesn't cover it, then we're able to do something. So, it seems to me that, you know, we might have to be creative.
So Bernie, I just said, we need to increase, the rest of the money I believe is coming from property valuations, but I'm thinking the budget increases, is it 1, 1.4 million? Or 2.2 million?
It's 2.2 million in taxes.
Right.
And 1.4 of that is part of the increase in the tax lid.
And that, that also encompasses the salaries, COLA and everything else?
Yes.
Okay, cuz I just, I, I thought 6 million, but that's gonna be accounted for.
Because I just, I mean, that's 6 million, but that's going to be accounted for. Okay, that's all I need to think.
Well, I think, I think you've given us a message. I think I, I think I've made a number of notes, and I think I know what you want. So we'll get that to you right away. And the LAVTR and the revenue sharing, I'm mad enough all the time that I keep an annual record of that, so I can get that to you. I'll get it to Jason right away, and he can distribute that to you as a, as a commission as well.
Thank you very much, Bernie.
Thank you very much.
And thank you, Hillary, and the staff generally. I'm interested in knowing if there is public comment on the budget that we've heard this evening. If so, if you'd please come forward. Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public comment period. And unless there's further discussion, we will, we are adjourned. Thank you.